Work session to order and will our mics are on. We're here for a budget work session. We're going to be talking about all kinds of money and all sorts of fun stuff like that. And Cody's here to help us through all of that because that's what he does for us. We also have public works here to talk about whatever they need to talk about with this whole budget process. And of course, everybody but Boyd.
Boyd and.
Bob. B and B. Okay. Where Bobby is, he was here last night. Anyway, here we are. Cody, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So I've got a lot of electronic stuff. And so do you want to sit here? Do you want to sit there? What is easier for everybody?
Is it on the Dropbox?
I'm getting it there right now.
If it's in the Dropbox, it can be brought up on that computer. We could see it on those monitors and still have a conversation.
So we've been probably gonna move.
Otherwise, we'd all have to turn around and look at the wall.
So it's up to you guys.
Counsel.
I have mine in front of me, so I mean either either one. I think you probably it's let's go up there if you guys need.
Okay.
You'll probably want to see it closer.
Up close and personal. Take your mics.
Here Katie.
Chivalry isn't dead.
No, not dead, but they did take a different form.
Thanks for clearing out the room, Cody.
Leave a few mics down there for you guys as well. So now there's room for our public works.
So. Bring it with me.
That's okay.
You'll open somebody will open up what we need to see.
Yeah.
I'll start going here and if you have questions, as always, just like interrupt me. Cause I'm talking about stuff, I'll go fast unless it's something that like we need to discuss. But to begin with, just here's kind of an update of where we're at. So here's our year to date actual, here's our budget for the year. And so here's the percentage of the budget. So you can see our different revenues where we're at. So our licenses and permits, a lot of this is due to building. We're doing really well this year. Fifty nine percent of the years past, so we'd expect to be about fifty nine percent. You can see some are ahead, some are behind, like court revenues are up. Um, as far as expenditures go, same thing. Here's the actual, the budget and how much has been spent. So you can see in most departments were below. It looks like all departments except for municipal court were running about right on. As compared to the prior year, so this is 2024. This is January of 2023. So here's the change. So you can see we do have some growth in our taxes. We have quite a bit of growth in our licenses and permits. This intergovernmental revenue, this was our ARPA funding that we received. So that's nothing to really be concerned about that we have such a drop there because that was more one time money. And then our expenditures, you can see for the most part, they're pretty consistent. The biggest differences was once again, ARPA, we had a bunch of expenditures. In 2023 for the public works facility and stuff associated with ARPA. And so that's the biggest difference there. And then in highway and improvements, we've done more projects as of this time last year compared to this year. And so overall, you can see we're pretty consistent. As far as our other funds go, so here's our, I didn't break them out, but here's our revenues, our expenditures. And then if we have a net income or a net loss, our CDA general fund. You can see here's our revenues for both years and we haven't been spending any money there. So you can see, we just have revenue this year and that's largely interest and transfers from the, the general fund. So this is the amount of cash we have on hand.
So that CDA, that's the one we set up many years ago for the 2700 North area.
Okay, the cash on hand now is the 209,476.
Correct, as of January, yep. And then sewer fund. You can see here's the revenues and expenditures for both years and how much cash we have on hand. Stormwater, you can see the same thing. And this has a lot of capital projects and impact fee projects associated with it, the six oh seven. So that's nothing really to be concerned about that we have a loss there. If you remember, I believe it was last year, we ended up doubling like our stormwater fee or the year before. And so that's why we do have an increase there. Sanitation, you can see we're doing pretty good there. And usually just, I think everybody knows this, but all of our enterprise funds, so our sewer, our stormwater and our sanitation fund. Their run basically is like independent businesses and we do want to have a profit in there for the most part. The only exception might be within the sanitation fund.
The difference between sanitation and sewer, what's?
Sanitation is garbage and recycling.
And why is that sep- why, why is that separate?
We're supposed to have as the idea from the state and from accounting principles wise is like each different thing is a different business. And the reason being is because so that we can manage it and we should be charging our fees based upon like our actual, actual costs.
It, it just seems like a random thing like to have its own.
That's how most cities are.
Well, the sewer is one entity and the garbage removal is another. They're both different contracted providers. They show up as different amounts on your Montavista bill. They're not conjoined in any way. They're separate, separate billings. And so it makes sense to me. Okay, Katie, I don't know if that helps or not at all, but.
When they're separate, it's easy to manage. And if you gotta figure something out, then you'd have to go back and separate it again.
For sure. And like with, and the difference between sewer and sanitation, I feel like is like with sanitation, we probably don't really need to make a lot of money. Like we probably need a little extra money so we can order some extra garbage cans. But with sewer, you know, like we need money. So if we have a sewer line, we need to work on or a pump station or those kinds of things. We have depreciation and all of that. So they're kind of totally different animals from an accounting perspective. So that's why those are all separate. The capital asset or CP asset replacement, that's our capital projects fund that we've been saving money for like vehicle replacements.
So Cody, when we see a loss on any one of these categories. How are we to perceive what that means through the rest of the fiscal year?
So, and so we use a capital asset replacement fund rather than like an internal service fund. And we could switch this, I've talked to like Dave and Nate and Robbie about this. So what we're doing is we're basically just saying, okay, we're going to make a contribution from the various funds to the capital asset replacement fund. We're not tying that almost to like a lease of the vehicles. So we're just estimating what we need to transfer each year to make that happen. So we're transferring like a fixed amount. How we could change this to like an internal service fund. And then how that works is you basically like lease the vehicles from one fund to the other fund.
Well, my, my question was broader than that. It's every time I see a bracketed number, it's a loss. And I'm saying, how concerned should I be, should we be about any kind of a loss in any category?
Well, then, so that's where I was going and just taking a minute to get there. So because of how we transfer the money back, if we bought more vehicles this year, then we transferred the money, we're going to have a loss in this fund. And so that's why we have a small loss there. So it's okay in this fund. Some of the other funds, and we can dive into these more deeper in a different time if you want. Like this fund, I'd be really concerned in stormwater if this loss was an operating loss. But it's largely impact fees and capital expenditures. And so I'm not as concerned.
What's gonna happen to it?
We're using one time money and these are on the full accrual. So at the end of the year, I'll capitalize those expenditures and move them to the balance sheet. And so we won't have a loss in the stormwater fund anymore.
It just has to be there right now.
Yeah. So to answer your question, it depends. In some cases, it's concerning. In all of these cases, it's not a big deal. This is due to like getting vehicles at different times. And so it's not a huge problem. And then even down here, you can see the expenditures that we budgeted out of the capital projects fund. Usually the capital projects fund, the only revenue it gets is interest income. And then if we transfer any remaining surplus at the end of the year. And so you can see. We have a loss right now, but that's because we're paying for some projects out of there, but we have plenty of cash on hand.
Cash on hand at the bottom is a cumulative total from all of the previous categories or is it?
This is just for the capital projects fund.
Okay.
So.
So it's not related to the 341,000 up on the CP assets?
Correct, those are all individual because you can see like we got three million up here in the sewer. And so we have more individually than we would combined for that.
We don't have to worry about going broke.
No, I mean, we don't have tons of extra money and, and that's kind of our rainy day fund, if you will. But we're doing okay too.
Thank you.
Some of those will adjust as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year anyway, right?
Correct.
We're not spending a certain amount, so revenues will catch up to it.
Right, and because of governmental accounting weirdness and like full accrual to cash basis. A lot of these enterprise funds, they actually have depreciation in them as well. So we're actually budgeting for depreciation and then the capital expenditures. So we're almost like double hitting ourselves. And so once we get to the end of the year and I get it ready for the auditors would pull those expenditures out and capitalize on the movement to balance sheet.
I just don't want to get anxiety over brackets.
No, no, brackets are okay.
Only bracket anxiety should be your March madness.
Oh.
Any questions there? So overall, we're doing okay.
And thank you. Like I said, explain it to us like we have no idea what you're talking about.
Yes, I don't.
Helps all of us, even those of us that have been through this before, sometimes we have to revisit it to truly understand it.
And so Katie asked two weeks ago, three weeks ago, whenever about sales tax. So here we are, sales tax wise. So you can see here's the monthly distributions. These are actually as they get distributed for accounting purposes. We get distributed like in June, actually April's money because it takes like a month to collect it. And then the business has a month, three minutes to the state and then they get it to us.
So the ones reporting, so when Andrea sends them to us and says, is there June sales tax reports, they're actually April.
Correct. So is that amount for January really what's left from December?
November.
November.
So like this is a little bit concerning to me because look how awesome of a November we had.
Yeah.
But then look at our December.
Which so that would have been.
Christmas.
Nah, oh, so these are actual months.
These are, so no, no, no. So like this amount that we got in January would have been November's because two months back. So, so we had a good, we had an awesome November, but then our December wasn't so great. Now there are some exceptions, like if somebody doesn't file, like say Smith and Edwards doesn't file their sales tax report timely. Then it can end up in the next month. So it's possible something like that happened in November, but it's still a little concerning that, that that's the case.
There are some factors that can skew this a little bit though, aren't there?
Correct, or like, and I don't think this has really been the case here, but like if we had a large business that went, like if Smith and Edwards went out of business or say they relocated to Harrisville or something, then you know, it can kind of be, I mean, it's a loss of revenue, right? But it can kind of be arbitrary a little bit too.
I see what you're saying. I bet looking like year over year even just.
Yeah, looking back at 2023 and 24, the differences in January and February are a little, a little bit different and kind of compensates. Small amount for.
Right, and you can see, and it looks like my charts didn't update quite right there, but these numbers are right. And so you can see we still have growth year to date, but it looks like it's slowing.
And yet you look at the number in the March column, which would really be January. And compared to the previous years, it's still ahead. It's just that one November one that's a little weird. It's like something's missing.
Right. And I forgot to, let me see if I can find.
And I wonder if that has something to do with. Well. Looking at December, I wonder if that has something to do with the size of that November report. If something crossed over there.
And without like diving into it really far, it's hard to know. I was just gonna look at.
It's almost like part of it's in the previous month.
I want to say that was an interest rate hike just nationally and maybe that has something to do with it too.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think the mayor is buying enough locally.
The thing that's interesting too about our sales taxes, if you remember, so sales tax, do you remember how it's collected in the state of Utah? Half and half, what's the halves?
Wait, origin, go half goes to the state, half goes to us.
So half goes, half stays wherever the point of sale occurs and half gets redistributed across the state based upon population. So if you look at like, I forgot to put this in Dropbox, but I think you all have it in your email. If you look at the March sales tax reports that Lindsay sent out. So before our direct charges, the, we generated a hundred and $60,000 worth of sales tax in Far West. And so then we get 50% of that, so that's 80,410. Our population portion that we got was 95,806. So we actually get a little bit more money from our.
More than our half, aren't we?
Than we do from our point of sale. Now, if we got like a Walmart or some big retailer in Far West, that could flip that. But right now we're getting more from population than from point of sale. Any questions on sales tax?
It's just interesting numbers.
It is kind of interesting. Okay, okay, property taxes. Hold on, I don't want this.
Long webinar yesterday about all of this.
So. So I pulled this from a couple of years ago and. Can anybody tell me how property taxes are calculated?
No.
After my webinar that I went to. Yeah, so the county comes up with a rate and then, but it's based on a certain percentage depending on residential. But it's, I think it's a hundred percent of commercial or non-residential is a better way to put it.
So you call, so.
And there's a rate like, you know, ours is like point zero, 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 one, something or four, something.
Okay, you're really close. You're dancing all around it. So with property tax, are we, do we get more money year in and year out? Or do we get the same amount of money?
Same percentage.
Well, it's, it's weird because no, there is a set revenue, but there, if we didn't have any growth, it would be the same dollars.
We say we need this much and they set our rate based on that.
Exactly. So we're guaranteed the same amount of money as last year and then we get added a growth component. So if you.
We build more houses or businesses, that gets added on to that. But then the next year, that's our new baseline.
What date is that determined as of?
I believe it's either June, it's, it's June 1st, I think.
January 1st.
January 1st.
So like one year I was building my house and it was halfway done as of January 1st. So if the county did their job correctly, like the assessed value on my house would have been half. And then we wouldn't get the rest of that, even though it was finished like the end of February until the next year. And you're exactly right, we're guaranteed the same amount of money as the previous year. So see, you can see that right here. Here's how much money we were guaranteed the previous year. And then here's the growth component.
The growth component.
And so then they add those together to get this and then they take our total adjusted value and they come up with a rate to generate that.
Right.
And so actually home values in Far West. Did they go up or did they go down on average from 2022 to 2023?
They went up.
That year they went up, but.
So we still got the same amount of money.
They went down, so the rate actually went up. Now individually, like if you live in the city, you may have made, well, you should live in the city, right? Some of us do. Okay, then it depends. But the rates actually went up because.
That was for 23.
I can tell you my taxes have never gone down.
Your rate may have.
Yeah, but I'm paying twice now what I did when I bought that house.
So, once they recalculate the percentage rate that generates the revenue. Is that what determines next year's revenue?
Say that one more time so I make sure I follow you.
So. We take the growth and add that to it and gives us a dollar amount.
Right.
And they go calculate a percentage to equal that rate.
Right, so that's right here.
So does that become the percentage to calculate next year's revenue?
That's our starting point for next.
Kind of, but they don't look at the percentage, they look at the dollars.
Okay.
And so there, the bad thing about it is there's no inflationary adjustment built into it unless you have growth. And so.
Doesn't necessarily always match inflation.
Correct.
So then what happens if, if the value of the home goes down, but they've guaranteed us the same revenue? They're going to raise the rate on my house in order to generate it.
Exactly, so you can see that's what happened in 2022 to 2023. So the rates actually went up instead of down.
We're never going to get a break.
So, right.
Well, it went down considerably.
Well, but look at it compared to 13.
And if it's in red, that's when we went through truth and taxation.
Right.
And so you can see on this, this is what, and so the certified rate is what the, the county comes up with to guarantee us that same amount of money as the previous year. So then the proposed is what we propose and then the final is what we finally adopt.
We approve.
And whatever we propose, basically, we can't go above that. So if we wanted to do a property tax increase by June, we have to tell the county that we're doing that and say we wanted to double our property tax rate. Then we have until August to go through the truth and taxation process and we can't go over double. So if we're like, oh, we wanted to buy this piece of property and we need like a little bit more money, it's like too bad, but you can go down. So you can see here's historically, here's all the rates. Here's the last time that we went through truth and taxation and you can see that was a pretty substantial increase. But the disadvantage of how the system works is it basically, as long as home values are going up, then the rates can continue to drop. So homeowners continue to pay the same amount for services, basically.
Then they see their overall taxes go up because of other.
The value of the home.
Not the city usually.
Right, right. So any questions there so far?
Should, and I, so, but even though it doesn't match inflation, we're buffering that by with other income.
Right, and so that's where like our sales tax going up is important because we're largely like a service corporation, right? And so being a service corporation, like we can't do anything without people. So like when we give raises or insurance goes up or that, unless we're doing truth. And that's where some cities do truth and taxation like every year and you'll hear them say they want to hold the rate. Because if they hold the rate, as long as what happened in 2022 and 2023 didn't occur, then you actually get whatever that growth factor is and is incense added to your property tax.
I know a lot of the other mayors, they're, they're like, we just do it every year so that we have it covered and we hold the rate. And they have fewer pitchforks and torches. That's what they told me.
Yeah.
Because everybody gets, okay, whatever, it's the same rate. People understand rates.
Right.
More than they do this math, this math.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, for sure, for sure. And so like you probably get your, this is the Weaver County parcel search. We can just pick some random person's house. You want us to pick yours?
There's not a lot of, there's an H in there.
Oh, did I, how I'm fat fingering it, let's just do it by the map because I'll be better.
Cousin of mine.
Let's see, I think I know where you live, Mayor.
Down a little bit.
It's right as you come into Bermuda.
Just five houses north of the church, 3372. Little more, right there. Yep. It's not there anymore.
Okay, so you get, you should get these statements, right? Each year. And so this is kind of interesting, you can go play with this if you want. So here's the tax breakdown.
The value my house went down.
The rate's going to go up, so you're still going to get ding.
Yeah, so you can see, and this comes on your annual statement. So you can see this is where your money is going.
City gets 130 bucks off of your house.
Not even that much.
See what the city gets versus like the other special districts. And if you come in here and flip it to a table, then you can see who's actually getting what. So Far West City, so we got 100 bucks.
100 bucks for a whole year from me.
So, so just think out loud for a second. So if we get a new subdivision and it has 500 homes in it. And let's say that it's a normal subdivision for, for Far West. And so that house value is like 580,000 is the median house value that the county use for 2023. So we get 100 bucks per house. So 500 houses go into the city. Yeah. So what can we buy with $50,000?
Can't even buy another house.
Yeah, so, so if you think about the services, so just, so like, and I'm going to pick on public works guys for a second. So if they're like, hey, we get a new, a new subdivision, it's got 500 houses, like we need a new public works guy. We don't come close to paying for a public works guy.
That's not even an annual salary for.
Nope, no, probably not. And by the time we figure in like a truck to drive and, and some of that stuff, we're probably three times that amount. And so that's where it gets tricky. And so going back to the ma- what the mayor was saying, he wasn't exactly right in that residential is less. Residential is only less than commercial if it's your personal residence. in that residential is less, residential is only less than commercial if it's your personal residence.
That's true.
If it's your personal residence, it's a forty five percent deduction on the assessed value. And then your property taxes are calculated on that. So if a developer comes in and says, hey, I want to build townhouses or condos in the city and you guys ask, well, are they going to be owner occupied or are you guys renting them? We're going to get more money if they're renting them. However, like, does that create?
Primary residence.
Right, so they might get that forty five percent deduction. However, is that going to create more issues? If their rentals opposed to like owner occupied and that's where it's.
Emergency services or whatever.
Yeah, and I'd say from a public safety standpoint, from like policing and stuff, probably.
But from from the pure monetary standpoint, we should be looking for more non-primary residences.
Yeah, yeah. So like you got to kind of look at it. And this is interesting. Lou Best is my neighbor and he talked to me about this. So I put this together for the planning commissioner a couple of weeks ago with what um they had before him. And so I pulled some of the M one properties. Um, and and here's the parcel numbers if you want to look them up. This was the market value, market tax value. This was the acreage. So this was the value per acre. So if you convert that into an average value per acre, this was the amount. This was our tax rate in twenty twenty three and they don't get the deduction. So that's per acre, that's what we get from M one on average, based upon what we actually have in the city for property tax. So then if you looked at it based upon if that was like residential units, so the home, the average home value, and I didn't have the twenty twenty three at the time, um, was six oh four, it dropped to like the five eighty. And so if you figured the average house, and I don't know if this is true or not, I need to reach out to the assessor's office, but about a third of an acre. So that's our value. And then you only get taxed on a portion of that, right? Like fifty five percent if it's your, so we're generating that on residential. So we were actually generating more money from property taxes on homes in far west than on the average M one.
Thank you for doing that, Cody, because I've heard that line of reasoning quite frequently that will we still get taxes? And I'm glad that we have numbers to put to it now.
And see, that's where it's nice, like i- in M one, if we can have a sales tax component based with it. Because if they're selling stuff, then we're getting more from it than just the property tax.
So when you look at something like mountain, the plumbing place up there, mountain supply, that's a sales point versus a pure manufacturing location where there's nothing going out the front door. It's all being shipped to somebody else and we don't ever see a dime of that.
Right. And there's all sorts of different rules on some of this stuff. So like Amazon, so if you we let's say we live in far west because we got a couple of outliers, but on average, we live in far west. So if you live in far west and you order a package and let's say um Dave sends it to a grandkid that lives in, I don't know, St. George, who gets the cell stacks?
St. George.
St. George.
Well, don't.
That's not what they said in the meeting I was in, that it's where it's built.
It's not where it's built. It's where it's delivered. And I can show you an email from the state tax commission that.
They changed their.
Uh, no, that's how it's always been. Um, it's based upon the the delivery point where it gets, okay, so now let's change scenarios. So let's say you love shopping at Target. So the closest Target's in Riverdale. So you do ship to store. Um, who gets the sales tax then?
Riverdale.
Riverdale.
Because that's the point of sale. That's where you're going. The money's going to change and you're going to pick it up or whatever.
Right.
That's where the transaction took place.
For you. So let's say you order a vehicle online. Let's say it's like a BMW. I don't know the closest BMW dealership, but I assume it's down in Salt Lake. Yeah. So who gets the sales tax then? Salt Lake, wherever.
Unless I can get them to drop it off at my front door.
Even then, if it comes from a dealership, it usually goes to the dealership. So now now like, let's say Carvana, but they don't have a location in the state of Utah. Let's say they're close. I know they have, there is one in Utah County, but let's say they don't. Let's say the closest one's in Wyoming. Then who gets the cell stacks?
Wyoming.
Far west or far west would get it.
Really?
If it's delivered there.
Delivered here.
Yeah.
Registered the charge of the sales tax of the video.
So sales tax laws are really weird.
Yes.
And but in general, that's the case. If it's where it's delivered, not where it's ordered from.
How do they come up with that?
So if I'm going to buy something for my grandkids, I ought to have it delivered to me and then send it to them.
You care about your community.
Yeah, yeah, you'd probably pay more because you'd have to pay shipping twice, but.
Or I just hold it till they come to visit and say, surprise, surprise.
Far west would get more sales tax money.
It is.
Um.
It's funny because they've actually been uh talking like uh residential is the new uh retail because of those factors. You know, because you've got enough people in a sack of homes, they're going to be ordering online. It's kind of a new weird thing.
It is a new weird thing.
That's good.
I don't like to count on that because they could change.
My daughter and son-in-law are really helping far west because there's stuff coming to the house all the time.
And and that's where like, you know. A lot of people are pushing towards like having mixed use developments where like the bottom floor is commercial and then the upper levels are are condos. And that does help us quite a bit from just purely a revenue standpoint. Because we're getting probably higher property tax than if it was just a condo or just like, you know, an apartment building because of the commercial in it. And then we're also getting sales tax.
Yeah, points of sale on each floor.
And then if we are also like if those are rental units rather than like owned by owner, we're actually getting more. So if we, if we look at it, like I was talking to a community development guy, and if you budget for like highest revenues, like that's probably the best type of development from just a revenue standpoint. Now, does that cost a lot more to maintain or to provide services? Yes and no, you know, like that's where we kind of have to decide. These are a few years old. I didn't update them just because I didn't know how much we wanted to talk about property tax. I'll just point out a couple of things. If we want to talk more about it, I can update them for you. But just.
I haven't changed this screen yet. I got a question here.
Okay.
West Haven, Marriott Slaterville don't have property tax?
Right. They don't charge city property taxes. However, like we were fire district.
He still does.
The county does.
So they're only saving their residents.
A hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks on their total tax bill.
Right.
Okay, so it's not like a major, well, I want to live in Marriott Slaterville.
But it is a good point of sale to the the average citizen who I'm, we're saving because we don't charge.
So what does that do to that? What does that do to them as an entity? West, you know, West Haven's a pretty good sized city population wise.
Make it up with um commercial.
And they've looked at it a few times and then they've, I I think they would have done it other than they ran into somebody like roadblocks like, oh, we don't have property tax. And for a long time, they didn't provide garbage. I believe they do now, but they didn't provide as many services as far west does, even though they have.
That's just on the surface. It looks like, whoa, what a deal.
For sure. And what this tries to show is because you have some entities, like some of these bigger ones down here that um some of them provide like Pleasant View, they have their own police department, but then they use Northview. Um, where then like Roy has their own police department and fire department. So trying to like make apples to apples instead of apples to oranges. So if we throw in there like Weaver Fire District's tax rate, then like instead of being ranked what we're fourth here tied for, you know, like however you looked at those two, um, we're really more like seventh by time you put all the boutique services together, if you will.
Yeah, but you look at South Ogden and my gosh, that tax rate is like.
Well, don't they? They are one that holds the rate every year.
Usually, I don't think they did last year because their rate dropped uh or their rate went up and so they didn't, they weren't able to hold it. But historically, yes, they usually do. They usually.
Went through the process.
Taxation, so.
Is that the same? Are those ones that have that kind of are those higher right rankings? The one ones that typically like does Ogden hold the rate?
I think Ogden, I don't know that they hold the rate, but I think they do truth and taxation a lot more frequently. And I think Washington Terrace does it like every other year. Um, and I think Roy's kind of like that, too. And so.
Well, one thing that they warned in the webinar I went through, and I've talked with these others as well, is um it it's all good to not, you know, go through truth and taxation too often, but you also don't want to wait forever because by the time you do, then you're usually taking a jump.
For sure. And that's where like in, I work for Riverdale too, right? And we did, uh, we doubled our property tax rate here two years ago. And like a lot of people were like, why didn't you bite off like smaller pieces? And it's like, well, you know, like we'd waited a long time and it'd been like ten, twelve years.
Doing little pieces or big pieces.
Right. The narrative then is you doubled our tax rate. Well, even when doubling your tax rate is only another extra hundred dollars a year, but still that that message is out there.
For sure. And it's hard too, because people don't realize that. And like, just looking from my experience from Riverdale, we decided to raise the rates in like January or February. And then home values went way up. So it shifted the tax burden from commercial to residential. So a lot of people, you guys probably all seen it on your personal residences, like property taxes almost like doubled, right? And and so it's like, well, we, the city only got a couple hundred dollars more, but you know, like they're like, well, my property tax went up two grand. And it's like, okay, well, it's not all the city.
County for that.
Right. And the fire.
Values and and the fire departments and all of these other entities, I mean, over the last couple of years, hasn't hasn't all of them but us raised their rates?
Yeah, the school almost does every year.
Right.
And so you can see just.
Taxes, right? There's a school district.
Well, the average person doesn't look at those. They look at the bottom line and say, oh, my God, you know, instead of where.
And they and they pointed us.
Yeah.
And that's why.
That's okay.
That's why the counties put um this together, trying to make it easier for people to look at and see where their money's really going and stuff. And it is good. And just really quick, because I know we need to keep moving. So you can see here, you can watch our property tax rates and what they did on a hundred thousand dollars of value. You can see we basically collect more or less the same amount of money. And then once we went up, then we collected more, but then it slowly started going back down.
For a hundred.
Yep. And then you can see even further down here. So like this was twenty twenty one, this was twenty twenty on one house. And you can see the value changed and the rate changed, but more or less they paid the exact same amount to far west, even though it was, you know, like different years.
Meanwhile, things kept costing more.
Right, yeah.
Inflation was happening for everything.
Well, it's just, I think the thing that we need to be able to say to a resident, if they come in here and they're a little hot under the collar, that what's happening to your personal property taxes is not the result of what the city is taking. It's not the result of what the city's tax rate is. That has stayed pretty balanced and level. It's these other entities out here that are insatiable. You know, they want more and more and more and they need more and more as the population grows. But the pie chart back there that you were looking at uh should help someone if if they'll take a minute and look at it to realize that what's happening to us financially with our tax liability is external to the city. It's not that the city's trying to pick everybody's pocket all the time. We're not.
Right, right.
I actually pay more for libraries than I do towards the city. I'm really close to it, but I'm just wanting to, I hang out in the city a lot more than I do at the library.
For sure. And my old.
Kind of an exemption. I don't have kids in school anymore, so I shouldn't have to pay that. I never go to the library, so I shouldn't have to pay that either.
Yeah, unfortunately, like it just is what it is.
Not user relevant, is it?
It's not. And like my old boss, I worked at a CPA firm for a long time and he's like, it's so funny. People get so hung up on their property taxes. But if you look at what services like far west provides for a hundred bucks versus what you pay for a cable bill or a cellphone bill, it's like.
I know some people that come to Freedom Festival and leave with a hundred dollars of coins from the like sawdust dig in their pockets. So it's netting out for them.
There there's a year's worth of taxes.
Right, right.
For the city.
For it. Right. And so you can just see, I'm, like I said, I'll keep going past.
We did this once, but um it might be worthwhile to do again with new numbers. And that is a similar pie chart, but with just, okay, what services in that pie and how much for our services?
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Okay.
Just for the city.
So like you can see, here's the growth. For like the what other cities have done versus what we've done. And then you can see, I put this together because we were talking about the sheriff's office. This is pretty interesting. You can see what's happened to what we pay for sheriff services versus what our property taxes do. And Gatsby, which is the governmental accounting standards board, they usually say, because property taxes is like your most stable revenue, that usually like property taxes should fund your public safety. So you can see like we almost did that with our last increase, but then we've lost ground, if you will, because they've continued to go up and we haven't ever had an increase.
Well, and last time that we had truth and taxation, we came up with the new rate was because of the sheriff's rate.
Right.
You know, and look what's happened since twenty thirteen.
Right.
Well, look at the inflation rate for twenty twenty two. It was up of over six percent there.
You know, but they've had their expenses that have gone up, too. They have to keep officers and, you know.
For sure. And vehicles and fuel and, yep, so on and so forth. So anyways, you can just kind of see all those and then we've already talked about that. And so anyways, we can update some of these if you guys want to talk more about it. Um, we've already covered all that stuff. Um, I think it's this one mayor that you were talking about. Um, oh, let's talk about this really quick and then we'll, I'll find the other one. So this is based upon our current year budget. This is where, and this is just general fund, because it's kind of the big one, right? So this is where our revenues come from. So you can see we're quite, we're pretty dependent on sales tax, about forty four percent. Usually they kind of say you want this to look like a stool, if you will.
Three-legged.
Yeah, or as many legs as you can.
Right, right.
And so if something happens to one of those legs, like how steady is your stool going to be? And so you can see like we do pretty good, um, but we are quite dependent on sales tax. So. Yeah, if the economy is not doing great, then you know, like that's where it gets a little bit like, oh, no, what are we doing? I think this is the one the mayor was talking about. So this was for twenty twenty four, this was the average house value for tax year twenty twenty three, sorry. Oh, and I didn't change that, but that's twenty twenty three. This is the twenty twenty three tax rate. So we on av- for the average house in far west, we collected a hundred and thirteen bucks. And you can see, so the mayors must just be a little bit below that five hundred and eighty value.
Reported square footage.
He was paying a little bit.
Quarter acre lot, so.
So, yeah, it doesn't matter. I'm just saying, on average, that's what it is. And so then you can see based upon our budget, and it's hard to say where that property tax money goes, right? Because it's unrestricted. We don't use it for a specific thing, but just based upon like a percentage of all of our expenditures, this is kind of where that money goes. And so you can see that in general, you know, like.
Year.
Yeah. So like if you've looked at what people are paying and it's like, oh, each year you guys pay thirty four dollars towards public safety. You know, like what does thirty four dollars do towards paying our policeman? I I think the county used to say it was like two hundred and seventy five dollars a call.
Yeah.
So it's like, how many?
When your neighbor calls, he's used up yours, theirs.
Like the whole block. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Just to complain about a rooster.
Yeah, yeah. So anyways, kind of interesting. Any questions on that stuff so far? Hey. Um, okay, I think the next thing I wanted to talk about and is the TAF. Um, so I don't know if you guys had a chance to review this. It is kind of old. Um, I've talked to, we sat down, Public Works and I did. Um, it's totally up to you guys. What I would probably suggest, I think it would be worth, I don't know if you read that lawsuit too from Pleasant Grove. Like the biggest thing from that lawsuit is, and this is where the state gets mad too, is they want, and this is why we need like an enterprise fund for sanitation, for garbage and recycling. They want the fees to be reflective of the cost. And so if we're charging a TAF, then it needs to be reflective of like, there needs to be the reason why we're charging it. We can't just be like, ah, let's charge three dollars.
Why we have this study.
Exactly.
And I did call Matt today about this and he said we would most definitely want to revisit the numbers in this before we decide on anything because just they were. Just they were pulling traffic counts, traffic data from twenty twenty and in twenty twenty, nobody was driving anywhere. And they've got some new.
True.
Technology for um gauging road condition that may give us. A little more, you know, data to pull from. And so, yeah, this is very sobering to me. And I can't, I don't know why we still have not acted on this since twenty twenty.
And see, I don't really love a tough, because I feel like it's just one more fee.
Do we have one right now?
We do not. And so like personally, I don't love it. Because it's like you're charging me a bunch of other fees. How do you accurately know that this is really what I'm causing?
But then how do we, but how do we?
Property taxes and other things. And if you look like right now, we have a surplus funds. So we can save those funds and put them towards transportation too. We don't have to do a tough.
But in the report, it was saying that unless we raised property tax rates by, you know, in two or what what was it? Seven years, all of our 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 classifications and would, we would be in the red.
Right. But so at the end of the day, it's like, how much money do we need? So if we can generate, like if this level's sufficient and we just need a hundred and twenty five grand, if we can find a hundred and twenty five grand another place. Then do we need a tough? That's kind of what it comes down to.
Well, but what what's happening though is we're growing. And so there's a difference between just maintaining what we have.
Sure.
Right? Because I'm going to use this as an example. I recently retired. And my uh income is one third of what it was. You know what? I'm doing okay because I can maintain a certain thing. But if something happens, or if I want something else, if I, you know, if I, or if I need something else, the water heater goes out, or you know, it's like, okay, I don't have. That revenue anymore for that. And and we have several road projects and ideas, you know, stuff coming in that. We're going to have to figure out how to address.
Well, and the thing with uh uh the challenge I have with relying on property tax to make up that difference is. That's something that we have to address every, that we would have to address that every year. Whereas like, so we would have to say, okay, this year we have to raise taxes this much money so we can cover that extra.
Same thing with a tough, really, if you want to keep, because you'd need to, like, once.
But it's it's a fee, not a tax. And so then you would not have to go through tax, through truth and taxation.
And that's why the state hates it. It's because you're like mitigating it. You're mitigating truth and taxation. So it's totally for you guys. But where I think we should, if we're going to look at a tough, I think the mayor hit upon it. If the reason we need a tough is because of all the. Growing growth, then we really probably should look at like a TIF too.
I think we need to do.
Because a- and the TIF can't help with maintenance, but it can help make sure that we're doing it together. So what I would recommend is in the budget. If you want to look at a TIF and a tough, we probably need to allocate some funds to have the studies updated. To have them see what they can do. And then we can always implement those mid-year. Um, like we did the franchise taxes, or we can just do a pro uh, we don't have to, I believe. We can ask Liam, but we could do. Like a public hearing to be ultra-clear and transparent with the residents and and then.
You can call it a fee, but it's still perceived as a tax.
Right, right.
It absolutely is. But one one good thing about a fee that's for something, it's for something. It doesn't accident, well, let's go do this other thing over here. Let's go buy a a piece of property over here just for fun. And so and so I I want, let me, let me go through a list of just the ones I could think of, road projects that we have either. Going on or want to have going on. We have four thousand north, thirty three hundred north, phases one and two, twenty five seventy five west. Uh seventeen forty west, the joint with Pleasant View Loop over there um behind um Maverick. Twelve hundred west and the associated loop, I call that, that's what I call the one that loops behind there. Those are some of the major ones that are. Very important to our future that are gonna, you know, it's going to take some um.
Those aren't ten year down the road. They're coming up fast.
Yeah, they're they're coming up fast. Some of them are already in the, we already have funding, partial funding on some of them, but we got to come up with the rest of it. We're going to have to do some land acquisitions in order to get some of this stuff done.
And that's in addition to deferred maintenance on the roads we have.
Yes.
Right, which which is most of our development happened at a certain timeframe. So most of our big subdivisions happen in a five-year. Bleeding at the same timeframe too. And we have not reached that.
Yeah.
We have compensated for that.
We have three, at least three bridges that we should replace over the next number of years. And I'm going to go ahead and say we probably need to add two. If we really want to think, you know, futuristically, some of our crossings.
Right, but like once again, is that TIF or is that tough?
I don't know. I'm just going, whether it's TIF or tough, somehow we're going to have to come up with some revenue in order to pay for some of these roads that we are going to need.
Sure, for sure.
For the circulation, just because it's going to hit us.
Right. And so that's where we have to like find the balance and decide what we need. And that's where if we have a little extra money, it's like, okay, well, do we take what we have and buy something else or hire a new employee? Or do we allocate some of that to something else? And that's what you guys have to decide. What do you want the city to look like? How good do you want the roads to be? What fees do you want to implement? And I know the mayor wanted to talk about this too, like recycling. Um, you guys probably know as much or more than I do, you know, like what are we going to do with recycling service? I think the mayor had talked about. Do we discontinue recycling service and try and time out with the tough? To that is like personally, once again, I'm going to need another garbage can. And so now, if you remember, I got to pay a hundred and fifty bucks for a garbage can. And then I'm going to be paying, so am I really, is it really revenue neutral?
Blue one for a black one.
You know, like what, so like some of those things, I think we got to think through depending on once given what you guys want it to look like and what you want.
I'm going to be selfish. I can live on one can.
Yeah. Right, because you probably have two kids, two people at home. I have five.
Exactly. If you discontinue the recycle, they're going to pick up all the blue cans. They will. That's why I said they will, not we will. All right. Are we sure that's what's going to happen?
Well, that we still have to decide what to do about.
Uh, would you say that's seven bucks a month or versus twelve? Black can costs more to tip than the blue can does, because it only happens half as often.
That's what we need to find out. They said they're going to restart in in April. We're in April. I'm going to get a hold and go, where are we with that? Because we suspended things for a while, but we're at a point where we got to go one direction.
We're at their mercy right now.
Yeah, absolutely. If they don't have a place to take recycling, then why are we recycling? And if they, if Econno Waste winds up with a whole yard full of blue cans, it's really not our problem.
Right. Or can we go to Econno Waste and say, hey, we'll give you twenty bucks a can?
They can just leave them for us because they probably don't want them anyway. And then we just say they're all garbage cans, but then we have to figure out the rates. You no longer have a recycle rate. You now have to pay more.
Right. So is our double can rate sufficient for our costs if all of a sudden we've got?
Yeah.
Tw- two thousand.
That's why we pay you the big bucks, Cody, i- is so that you can figure these numbers out for us.
Black stripe on the blue can so that they know that it's a black can.
Who are you? Hi, Boyd. How are you?
Can I ask a question back to the tough? Are you, are we able to? Because in that report, they had it broken down by commercial users, residential users. Are we able to do a tiered tough rate?
I think we can do about anything. I think some of that depends on what you want. We just have to have justification for it.
And then same with like, I'm just thinking, for example, the development we're looking at over on Cottonwood Drive for a TIF. So we had a have a TIF. Are we able to? Have different impact fees based on you. So that one we would charge more than, say, a residential subdivision.
So probably not. I mean, because usually they're based upon ERUs and a trend and impact fee isn't for. Like maintenance, it's for installing infrastructure, really.
Well, I'm thinking, but though, like the infrastructure for that development should cost more because, you know, you're going to have. The cost to just make something that's sustainable for truck traffic is a lot more than what's sustainable for a neighborhood.
And a lot of that, I think we could dictate, like that's questions for Matt. And like sometimes cities will have different impact fees for different areas if there's challenges with the infrastructure or whatever. Like, let's say. Let's talk sewer for a second, because it's a little easier. Let's say there needs to be like a big lift station in one section of the city. So it's really easy to be like, these are the costs associated. And so it's way more Robbie's neighborhood than my neighborhood, because he's got a lift station. I don't. So yes, some of that's just going to depend on what they can do and um what you guys want them to do. What you want it to look at like. And obviously, I'm sure the harder, the more complicated it is, the harder it is probably for city staff to be like, oh, well. This one's this one, this one's that one. If it's a flat, it's easier to manage.
With that development over there, uh there might be an interlocal agreement with impact fees between the two cities.
Um, and then just public works, like what's, what's your feelings on a tough and a tip?
We just, if if we have a project to do, like like the mayor listed all those projects, those are things that we worry about. Because we plow them, we we maintain them, we we do the road size and everything. And we see the damage being done. And we get the phone calls, but we don't have, we we can start the project, but we can't finish it, because we don't have the the funding. And the majority of the roads that we maintain aren't even used by the residents of Far West. Most of them are coming. From other cities and driving through and so it's just, it's it's hard for us to.
And toll gates are frowned on for some reason.
Some reason there.
I think with, I think with a tough, you can allocate that money to roads per se. There's, I think generating money with property tax would be fine as well. But I think if the council, if you're going to generate the property tax. You need to definitely budget that into the road system. I think just one way or another, we're going to have to raise money to put into the roads.
And a tough is something that you put it into place and it's in place year to year dependent, regardless of who's sitting here. And so say in four years or two years, there's a different set of faces here. They might not have the same appetite for. Uh increasing property tax to pay for roads and you, if you can put a tough into place.
The engineering study would would dictate, I don't think it would be a willy-nilly number thrown out there. It would be refined down to, hey, this is. Where we can start and gradually move up into a position we.
And you can charge, you can charge for ERU essentially, and you can charge for the businesses. Of more of an ERU than residential homes. Try to keep it.
Based on their uses.
Even though our residents are the ones going to a lot of our businesses here. It, that way they're not getting double.
It seems to me that the tough that you're talking about right now, if that were. Included. Becomes an identifiable unit. It's not an increase in your property tax. It's not connected to your property tax in that way. It's something that the city needs. That we all need to share in the expense of to maintain our city. And it's not going anywhere else. It's not discretionary. It's earmarked for one purpose. And I I have to think that most people around here would rather drive on a road than dodge potholes. You know, and so in that regard, it becomes, I'm not, I'm not in favor of having to pay more. I'm already losing my shirt. Okay, but I think in that regard, it would be a lot easier to explain. And to justify than just what happens to look like another tax rate increase.
And just play the devil's advocate for a minute, like on the other side. So here here's what I think with the tough on some of those things. So one, all I would take is a council that didn't like the tough and make it, get rid of it. So, you know, like, yes and no, right? Is it more steady? The other thing, if you remember, are sewer rates, like unless we go in and assess like the ERUs. Remember McDonald's and Taco Bell?
Right.
Like there, the ERUs for Taco Bell was like two and the ERUs for McDonald's was like ten. So is that like accurate? So and that's where the tough like kind of stinks, because there's, we're dependent upon those engineering estimates. Where if you go back to the property tax, if we raise property taxes, then it's allocating it based upon their assessed value. And so in a lot of ways, like it's probably a more equally equitable allocation. And it's going to hit the businesses more because they're not getting the forty five percent deduction. And then the businesses that are bigger, like a Smith and Edwards, they're going to have to pay more. So and and I still think at some point the state auditor's office is going to come after these toughs, which is fine. But just kind of keep that in your back of your mind. They.
By reading that opinion, I didn't get that. I thought the takeaway from me for me was. Yeah, you, it seemed pretty clear that like this was an acceptable eh fee. But like you said, you would have to, it has to have an a a cost, a direct cost to that fee.
So the state auditor hates fees because we're circumventing the truth and taxation process.
The state Supreme Court said it was.
So you got to keep in mind, these are two separate issues. All it would take is the state auditor's office to go to.
Challenge it again.
No, they do, why would they challenge it? They go to the legislature and say it's no longer legal for cities to implement. A fee for transportation.
But yet in this last legislative session, they talked about the tough. They didn't actually pass anything to do with the tough, but they were coming up with some. You know, rules and regulations for it. And what they're recommending is if we choose to go down that road, that we should really consider. Looking at what they were putting in place for that, so that we're all kind of already compliant with what they will probably eventually pass.
So like it's sixes, I feel like, like, because they could go, you know, all it takes is one legislative member and and we're done, you know, like. And and property tax is a little more stable that way. I do agree. I like that it's earmarked, like it's nice that way. Like this is for roads. But there are some downsides, and they're not tax deductible either, because your property taxes, you can claim on your income taxes. You can't do that to top.
So why does the auditor not like them?
Because you're circumventing, because just like we just talked about, instead of doing, yeah, instead of doing a tax, we're mitigating that with a fee.
I'm not sure I buy that. I think there's an ulterior motive behind why he doesn't like them.
He doesn't like any of the fees, honestly. Like he feels like we should have to go through truth and taxation. Like every time we want to raise our utility fees, which would be crazy.
But I liked your suggestion. I think that, I I mean, is, would we need to build out, you know, the kind of framework for that in our budget now? As we're planning for it, if that's something we wanted. And then if we did and we decided, you know, once we get these kind of studies updated and decided. Eh, yes or no, either way, at least that that framework would, that, you know, would be in the budget to either go or no go.
So what I would say, because we don't know, like, what if they come back and like, I think the options were maybe like two, three, or three, five and seven. And nine dollars or something like that and that.
I think the recommended amount was like a seven dollar.
Those weren't set numbers.
For sure.
Right.
So for the budget, which one would we choose? And and so how would we build it in? So what I would say we should do. If you guys are interested in going forward with the tough and TIF, which is great, let's budget money to 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 do the studies. To pay the engineers, to get that work done. And then let's say they get that done in early fall. Then we can have a public hearing. You guys can decide what you'd like to do. And then in conjunction with that public hearing, we could do a budget amendment.
Okay.
And then once we know like we're more dialed in and it's like, okay, this is what we're doing, then we can. We can, you know, like budget more accurately. The other thing I'd say is, like, we do have money, like, we've got like eight hundred thousand dollars of local option money sitting around. And I know that doesn't go a long ways on bridges, but we do have money too. And so like that's the other thing that the tough, we can't just have that sitting around forever. Same thing with the TIF, right? We got six years with impact fees. So if we're going to do these things, then we need to stay up on the projects and we need to keep like biting those things off and getting them done quickly.
I see a lot of projects coming.
Right.
I see running through eight million dollars real quick.
So and then this is kind of a good segue. Um, Katie talked to me about. That development as well and about some of our options. There's Pioneer Road, here's Amazon, so right here.
Yes.
Um, so I've got the RDA layers turned on. This is not an RDA.
Okay.
Not right now.
Not right now.
Right.
And just if, the simple thing to remember with an RDA is the term that goes with them is like, but if. So usually the reason you do an RDA is it's like, well, we could do this development, but if for this. Because like, let's say. Because like, let's say that like you need to simulate all the land. Or but if we had a road, or but if we reallocate, relocated these power lines and water lines and stuff. That's what the RDAs are really for. So we can't use an RDA really for ongoing maintenance. It's more to build it.
And see, I think with this conversation today, and I think are my biggest concern with this development, from what I heard from our public work staff was just the ongoing maintenance of those roads after they're beaded over to us and um. That's where I think, you know, the tough would be a prudent choice for, for, for that area.
And like, once again, I don't want a property tax increase either. But that's where at some point do we need to do a property tax increase so that we're getting more than like a hundred bucks? Per like assessed value? Because are we not getting enough from all this growth that we're really not getting what we need? Like, are we really like undervaluing our service? And so, yeah.
It's a bitter pill to swallow either way.
Exactly.
Because we're, we're going to be asking our residents in one form or another to.
Build a road.
Yeah. Build and maintain the roads.
Right, and our property taxes are expensive up here. And like I was talking to my in-laws that live down in St. George. Our property taxes are almost double what theirs are down there. But in St. George. But, and like similar assessed values and stuff, but they don't have snow removal, they don't have some of those things down there. Um, plus we have older infrastructure up here in a lot of ways, you know, like they've had a ton of growth down in those areas.
They've built all theirs in the last ten years.
Right, so they're going to have problems. They're probably going to have this conversation in like fifteen, twenty years, right?
They have a lot of those second homes too.
Right. But then they get the, the full hundred percent of the property tax too. And so it's kind of a six and one half dozen. So that's what I would suggest with the tough and the tiff. And then like we can talk to the engineers. These guys can do what they do. Um, I think they would probably just need some input from you guys on what you want it to look like. If you want it based upon ERUs and things and, and then we can see what they come up with.
And that's a, what you suggested is a prudent path forward.
So, so in this work session, we can't actually take action, but I can basically ask Matt to go forth and start the study. Right?
And we should have funding in, because we've got glassy road money and, and money that's available in that department. So we could actually probably get the wheels turning.
And we stop hold, does everybody agree that we should at least update our study?
My next question, how fast can we get the study started?
Okay, the study with the thought of exploring a tough and a tiff.
How are we going to fund all these road projects going forward and maintaining what we have? And keeping them in the good shape they are, because I know when I cross into other cities, I can really tell. So these guys do a good job of maintaining what we have.
Because this was only specific to a tough, not a tiff.
Right. And it was four years ago before everything got really expensive.
It does take a while. I mean, it's, that study is no joke. I know we put a lot of time into it during COVID. And maybe that's why it slowed down a little bit, but it was, it was a.
Yeah, and that's what Matt said. He said, yeah, definitely, we would want to reevaluate that.
And the other thing in talking with these guys, we probably really need to do that with our park impact fee study too. It's really old, like it was really addressed, it was thirteen. And it was really addressed for building Mike out north. So we probably need a consensus from you guys too, to, to move forward with updating that too.
I, I do have a question with, with that, um, do we need to make a list, a capital improvement list for roads? That the tough would include?
The tiff or the tough?
Either, either one.
Uh, that I, I don't know, for the tiff for sure. Um, for the tough.
And then we also added future projects, which now for the last four years, we've done some of, some projects, we've done some maintenance. So it's gonna, they're gonna ask for all those things.
And I think that was part of what that new technology that Matt was telling me about, that it would come out and give us existing conditions.
And they bring all of our roads.
Yeah.
They did that once and there'd be a whole lot to do.
That's four years old, so.
Yeah, and he says now it's GIS based too, so it'll help with the management of things on the backend.
It'll probably help like support these guys' story too, because like, you know, a road's in way worse shape in four years than it should have been. And it really helps collaborate.
I think in four years.
Right. Right.
Yeah, the park, the parking uh, impact fees, capital improvement project uh, study again. We did one just the same as the stormwater uh, three minutes. Uh, but it hasn't been done since two thousand thirteen.
I've been thinking about that because I was in this grants, in this grant stuff and going through, I'm like, we don't have, I mean, we talked about it. Our parks plan very briefly in our general plan, but we don't really have a detailed, you know, strategic parks plan, like we do our trails plan and you know, I think that's something that we could probably do alongside.
With these new developments coming in, that, that, that needs to be added to.
Yeah, we should. I definitely think we should.
Because, I mean, the money's earmarked for five years to have to spend it, but we do have parks like the library park that is going to need funding, even grant matches. And so we need to do that study.
And that, that's a question I had was about, so we have our general plan that does identify things like there is sort of a transportation plan within that. There is a park plan within that. But they're pretty lightweight and it's basically people pointed at maps going, it'd be cool here. You know, okay, how much of that is feeds into this, or do we got to have these full up plans for them to be? Capital improvement plans, it's, it's a little bit more in depth than just pointing at a map.
Well, I'd say it's different too, because like some cities, I think like Park City or somebody, they say we want some, like one acre of park for every like.
And our general plan does state that now.
So that's, that's the one plan I would say. The capital improvement plan is, I think you guys all know this, but just as a refresher. Like we can't build like the, and I'll be all like, like Smith Family Park. When, before it existed, we couldn't charge a Smith Family Park impact fee when we have now. If that makes sense. We've got to charge for the equivalent of what we have in impact fee. But usually what you do is you have a capital improvement plan and it's got like fifteen or twenty years worth of projects. And then your impact fee analysis is a subordinate of that and it pulls in like six years worth of impact fee projects. And we just updated the stormwater, so that one's good. Sewer, we don't need, right? Because all the trunk lines are central weavers, so we're really good on that one. But the park one, we really need to update. And then if you want to look at a tough or a tiff, we need to look at that one.
So is, with the tiff, is that kind of our transportation plan or?
I think it would probably be all inclusive, especially if you're doing tough too. And then like we could, I mean, it's up to you guys, but um, at some point we could decide if you do a tough or we do property taxes or whatever, we could try and go in and allocate and say, okay, like the local option sales tax that we're getting now, we're going to use that for overlays every year. And the tough, we're going to use that for this. And so then these guys have like a pot of money that they know that that's what they're doing with it, rather.
Really, it's all about the buckets. Where are we getting this stuff from?
And it did make that recommendation in this report to, we needed to put some like policies and directives to how that how that was spent and how that looked.
And what I want to keep in mind, what, when we do these studies and if we decide to go that direction. That may very well create a lot of change or required change in our general fin, our general plan.
Sure.
So the planning commission needs to be aware that that's coming.
Absolutely. So I say it's kind of chicken egg type things because it's like, this is where we want to go, but now we're planning to go, you know.
I'm not sure if we have it. You guys can correct me if we're wrong. Some cities too, like with their transportation, they've actually had engineers design like a, a specific asphalt and road base mix and all that stuff, and that's in their city spec. And so then they've got to build it to this standard, so you're not getting a contractor like putting in sub, subgrade that's going to wear out really fast. So some of that they could look at too. And see if like, maybe we need to change some of those standards if it's in like an industrial area, if they're not, you know, like holding.
It's industrial, it's this thick if it's residential, even though for even though for what it's worth, a lot of our residential streets are, are kind of being industrial when you look at how many Amazon trucks are driving around. Just, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There is a lot of traffic still happen. Roads still have to hold up.
Well, we're really a corridor city, like you talked about, like everybody uses us to get.
Oh, yeah, we're, with I fifteen going through the middle of us, it's like everybody's going to I fifteen. You know, on, on these and up north and south and two thousand west when I fifteen is shut down, you know.
So I think that is most of what I had prepared for tonight. I don't know if you have questions about anything else, if you got stuff for the public works, if I forgot anything.
Are, are we going to have, we have to have a tentative budget by the first of May?
By the, yeah, whatever the first meeting in May is.
So that's like right away.
Yep, so we've got about a month.
Well, and Mayor and I will be here on the eighteenth.
So do we need another work session?
You guys want another work session? I think the more we talk about this, the more we know about it and everything.
I'm fine with that.
I'm open to whatever it is we need to do, whatever is the desire of the commission.
I think knowing that it's a tentative budget on the second and from there, we can still tweak and change and move things, so I.
Yeah, and if, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we decide to go down the route of truth and taxation. It's a tentative budget at, in June, still. And then we have a final budget is September.
August, but yeah.
August.
Yep, so it's weird because you're actually operating on a budget that's not all the way approved yet.
Right.
So it's kind of a wonky that way. So right now, our final budget adoption would be June twentieth. Um, so this is what I would say on a work session. If you have more marching orders for us. Like if there's stuff you want us to look at, there's stuff you want us to get ready to talk about, then that's great. Let's do another work session. Um, before the second. If there's, if you feel like you've kind of covered most of the stuff and you want us to put together like what everybody, all the city employees have, and then talk about it on the second, and then do more work sessions after that, after we've kind of got like a draft to tweak it, we can do that. So it's kind of up to you guys what you would like to see and.
Where are you on deciding whether or not to do these studies? These evaluations that we're talking about?
I think.
Are you going to go after them right away?
Decided, yes. We're going to go ahead and get these studies so that we can make informed decisions.
How long would that take?
Longer than we want it.
Longer than May second?
Yes.
But then we would, and that, but then if we decide to move forward with it, we just do a budget amendment. Whenever, whenever they come back.
We can always have a budget and then we can always change it.
Right.
Whether, you know, and we can always, and maybe that feeds into whether or not we do truth and taxation. I don't know. That's up to this council.
So are we good enough for a tentative budget for May first, May second, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
We don't need anything before then?
And that, that's fine. I, I have a question, because I don't know. If we have a bunch of land acquisition to do, where would we get those funds?
What's a bunch?
I don't know. How many road projects are there out there?
No, I think dollar amount.
Need to be specific about which properties?
No, I want you dollar amount. I don't care where they are or how many.
Three to five million.
Three to five million. So it probably depends. Uh, you know, like I just showed you the capital projects fund, we've got over three million dollars in there. So if they're smaller stuff, we can probably take it out of there. If they're tied to road projects, then that's probably where we need to look at like a tough or a tiff or a property tax.
What if that three million was a temporary outlay with a substantial reimbursement to follow? In other words, it's going to go out, but part of it's going to come back. In other words, it's not a, it's not a permanent expenditure, but we do need the upfront funds.
And it, some of that would depend on if you guys are comfortable spending like all of our capital projects and fund money. Or if you want to like, I mean, obviously like the worst case is bonding because that's going to cost us money.
About a ten.
A what? Um, we could maybe do something like that. If you.
Tax anticipation note?
Yeah.
I don't know if you can do it with this case, but if, on a refund potentially, but pay a fee for this note, I mean, the re-interest, but.
That's how the fire district works.
Exactly.
Or we could do like a PIT, or what's the new one? Uh.
PIT? No, that's infrastructure. There's too damn many acronyms.
But there's a brand new one. You talked about it last city council meeting. Well, there's a PIT, but there's a brand new one that came out. Anyways, it's like a, almost like an RDA, but the developer does it.
Oh, yeah, just the.
And then the property tax value comes back in. We could do something like that too. So depending on like, let's just say some hypotheticals here. Let's say the vast majority of the property acquisition is to benefit one entity. If they were willing to pay for it upfront, then we could pay them back through like a PIT or some of those things. The only disadvantage of that is that property tax money is not coming to us, it's going to them. And so we're not going to see any growth off of it until that pit's paid back. So we're like giving away our property tax money to fund it.
Need to have an offline meeting? If you're talking.
Oh, about very specifics? Well, I think we know where one of them is. It's behind our shops.
So and if they're smaller, like Adams is a good example right over here, we use money out of the capital projects fund to buy that. And, and we've got like three point three million sent in there that we could use that money for. And, and we don't have to pay interest and things on that money.
Yeah, maybe I do want to show you something that.
But it depends on how much and where and all those things too.
Yeah, well, there's lots of things in the air for sure.
Anything else? So let me just recap. So we're going to put together the tentative budget for May second. Um, we can have a work session May second if you want, um, before the meeting or after the meeting. We've done that sometimes where then I went through like the budget line item by line item. Um, so that you guys know everything that's in there. And then at that point, if you wanted to schedule another one, um, we could do that. And I am gone the first part of June. I'm going to be gone for just about a week. But I'm happy to meet as many times before that as we need to.
I think a work session before the second.
So we're all up to date on.
Sure, we'll all have a lot of questions.
So before the second, as in?
I mean, oh, sorry.
Before the meeting on the second, okay.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be this long. I mean, thirty minutes is probably going to be your forty five at most.
If we're just going through the budget fast, I'm just going to review what you put together and where it comes from. I can talk fast.
Is that where we discuss, discuss certain budget items?
Yeah, so usually we talked to you about some of the capital items. We didn't have them all together. Um, so we'll just, we gave them to you before that capital improvement plan. So we'll just try and fit as many of those into the budget as we can. Um, unfortunately, like if we use the capital projects fund to pay for that, like three million dollars worth of land acquisition, then we're not going to have as much money for like a public works facility and some of those things. So it might be you guys picking and choosing what you want and what you want.
We don't.
Got to, got to throw things on the table so that we know, you know.
Right.
What's coming at us and what we can and what we can't do, because you know, we're, we have limits. We all have limits.
Right, right.
And if we did nothing, then we'd just be where we are anyway.
And then the mayor will talk to Jones about updating the park impact fee, the tough and a tiff. Don't forget anything. Is there anything else you guys talked about that I forgot?
Okay. Anybody got anything? It's all about budget. Thank you, Cody, for all of that. I guess that, I don't, there is no motions, there is no nothing, but unless somebody has something they want to bring up about budget, because that's what we're discussing, we, we're going to be adjourned. Other, and then it turns into a parking lot discussion. Adjourned.